Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 12th, 2025 East Whiteland Township Supervisor Meeting. If we can all stand and offer the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll give a quick introduction of everyone up here on the table. On my far right is Supervisor Peter Fixler. On my immediate right is Vice Chair on his second-to-last meeting in his tenure, Rich Orlow. On my immediate left is Bernadette Kearney, our Solicitor, and on my far left is our Township Manager, Stephen Brown. Executive sessions were held on September 10th at 4:30 to discuss personal, real estate, and legal issues. We, I'm sorry, but that date is wrong. So. Executive sessions were held today at November 12th at 4:30 for legal, personal, and real estate. Next is I'd like to point out a situation that pertained to a police matter, positive outcome, a drone. Last Sunday during our community event, I saw that the drone that was on display was lifting off and taking off, and Chief Jaeger had indicated to me something had happened in the community that a woman had wandered away from home and became lost. Saw a couple hours later, the drone returned during the community event period, said things were fine. Good outcome, don't know all the details, but the next day I received an email from a resident, and I just wanted to mention a couple things in his email to me to point out just some of the great things that our emergency responders do, our police and our fire, just to point it out. His letter to me said, "I want to sincerely thank everyone who helped yesterday during the search for my wife. Your quick action, compassion, and teamwork turned what could have been a tragic situation into one big happy ending." He goes on to say that "The East Whiteland Police Department responded swiftly and with remarkable professionalism. They arrived with officers, vehicles, drones, and even search dogs. One officer carefully reviewed our home's security footage and established a crucial timeline. Please give an extra shout-out to the officer who carefully and meticulously went through the camera footage to develop a timeline and showed some very acute detective skills and could be an advancement in his career." After a two-and-a-half-hour search, the woman was found. Everything is fine. I will also add that in assistance with our police officers, the neighbors in Glenlock helped as well in the search, and so shout-out to them as well for, you know, helping out a community member who was in need, and all of our police apparatus and service and training paid off on a positive result. So, thank you, guys.
I did just want to say there were a lot of things that went right that day, but one of them was obviously having a drone, so I appreciate the Board and our management team here for letting us get that drone and to train the pilots and so forth. I'm glad it worked out in a positive way, and it's not the first thing that we've done or accomplished with the drone. It's come to a lot of community events as well, but also I believe the fire department was there, they helped as well. And while I'm on that topic, the camera proved instrumental in establishing a timeline. So I'm going to use this couple more seconds to make a pitch for cameras. They're just invaluable nowadays when we do investigations. Any time in the past where there was no leads at all, it was like, oh, you know, I'm sorry, you know, somebody stole your package from your porch. Nobody was around, nothing happened, and you know, it's just gone. Nowadays, it's, you know, there's all kinds of electronic stuff, and one of them is cameras. The first thing we do is go to neighbors, do you have cameras, so forth, and they just help us immensely. So I'm kind of making a pitch for if you don't have cameras, you know, even just one to give you a little bit of sense of security. But in this case, the cam, everything altogether, all of the electronics and the human personnel were there, and it worked out. So, thanks.
And then again, along those lines, was it two Fridays ago, unfortunately, at 11:30 at night, we had a, we had a driver heading north on the southbound lane on 202, causing a very severe accident and a fatality. Again, our police and fire were there. Greg, you can make comment as far as I saw the mangled mess and, you know, the fact that you guys had the skillset to remove people, get people out, and save people lives was pretty remarkable. And so, again, thank you and for those type of services that you perform on a regular basis, and you need a shout-out on that. I don't know if there's any specific details or anyone you want to call out on it.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, unfortunately, I think it was this past Friday about 11:30 at night, a driver, we're unsure where they got on, but they got on going northbound in the southbound lanes of Route 202. Two motors were driving in the right direction, the motorist come around the corner and struck two vehicles head-on. The first vehicle that they struck, the lone occupant, the driver, was deceased in the vehicle. When our emergency crews arrived, we had one vehicle with the driver trapped in the vehicle and another one injured in the other vehicle. Our crews worked to extricate the victim that was trapped, and we transported two patients to Paley Hospital with significant injuries, but one person did succumb to their injuries at the scene, so it was very sad.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to 2C, I'll turn it over to Catherine regarding any updates on grants.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll have a further update a little bit later on in Board motions and resolutions on specific grant applications, but as of right now, due to what had been the state budget not being passed, any award, awards, excuse me, had not been announced, but as of tonight, it appears we have a state budget, so hopefully we'll hear very soon about the applications the township has pending.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will bring in Larry on the Zoom. Hey, Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Parks and Rec is kind of hitting a little bit of a wall now as we get into the winter months, but kind of want to shout out our last two major events that we had. We had our trunk retreat event at the end of October in partnership with Katie Markley PTO, hugely successful event, had about 300 people come out. We awarded some prizes for the best decorated trunks, and all around, just a great event. Shout out to Police and Fire being a part of that as well. And then last weekend, we had our Community Day event on Sunday. Great, great event. Between 800 and 1,000 people came out, the weather was absolutely perfect, music throughout the event, we had some awesome community vendors and partners, and as you kind of mentioned, a huge shout-out to Police, Fire, Traffic Police, and the volunteers for their participation and the service in the event and also Public Works. Without them, this event would not happen, but also kind of mentioning that their job does not stop when these community events happen, and it's just another thing that they do to help make our community that much more special and awesome to live in. So fantastic events, it really takes a village, and I'm looking forward to next year to continue to grow it. A little further down the line, we're going to bring back our Holiday Lates contest that we started last year. You'll see some information coming out on that soon, but other than that, kind of quiet on Parks and Rec.
Okay, thank you. Larry, the Board just wants to thank you for putting together a really good event at the Community Day. Second year in a row, you could see it growing, and a lot of people were involved, and thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the Board for the support and the continued enthusiasm for things of that nature, so it makes my job a lot easier with you guys on board.
Sure, very good. Moving on to Board Briefings, final topic on 2E. John, you've got an update on the election sign removal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may have seen on the way into the Township Building this evening, there are bins down along the main entrance to our complex here. We're encouraging people, if they have signs, they want to have them recycled, that they'd be dropped off there. They're pretty full now, but if you stick them there, I'm sure we'll find room to recycle them along with the other ones that are already there. On that note, if any residents see any stray signs out along the public right-of-ways, not on people's private properties, you can give us a phone call or reach out to us using the Citizen Reporter online to let us know, and we'll go out and make sure that they are removed and recycled.
Very great. Good job during the period of time of removing signs that were illegally placed on public properties and notifying all of the political, heads of political parties of what exactly you were doing so they understood it. I know I ended up getting a lot of comments about it looked a lot more orderly and it wasn't as hectic as in the past, so thank you. Moving on to Board Motions, I'll turn it over to Chris Jaeger in terms of two hires that he would like to talk to us about.
Yes, once again, we've come to that point where we're hiring and people are leaving. So luckily, we're a desirable place to work, so we really don't have much of a problem finding people. Based on what's going on in the world right now, or especially United States, it's nice to have that ability. So, we had a, our office manager, Joe Miles, who has been here since 2017, he got an offer from West Chester Borough to go and work as a manager, and is pretty close to the position he had now, but it was a little higher up with people under him, so he chose to leave. We did a thorough search and found Sarah Rosaza, who was working at West Whiteland Township at the time. She applied for the job, and she was doing essentially the same thing that we needed, so it fit well, and we hired her last Wednesday, I believe it was her first day. We also were at least one officer short at the time, so we hired one police officer. This was a long process, obviously, because we had to start a new list, and that officer's name is Isaac Lauterbach, and he comes from us, he was born in United States, but he lived in Israel for a while. He was a police officer, among other positions similar to that in Israel. Speaks, I guess, Israeli, I don't know. Yeah, I heard him speaking today, and it was, I didn't understand any of it, but it sounded good. So, he started Tuesday, Monday, so we're welcoming him aboard, and then we have one more in the works right now for another person who's retiring in January. So we're trying to get ahead of things so that we're not always trying to, you know, chase our tails. So, once again, appreciate the ease with, of hiring these people as it comes up.
Any questions from the public? Any questions from the Board?
None, very qualified.
Yep, everything looks good. Peter, would you like to make a motion to ratify the hiring?
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the hiring of Sarah Rosaza for the position of Police Administrative Assistant, and to ratify the hiring of Isaac Lauterbach as a new police officer.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it's passed. Catherine, tell us about the UCC Board.
Thank you, yes. So the township is currently engaged in an intermunicipal agreement for its Uniform Construction Code, or UCC, appeals board with East Town Township and Malvern Borough. Each municipality offers two members to this board, so it's a five-member board, but there's one alternate. The board meets pretty infrequently and only as needed when an appeal application is filed, and so unfortunately, because of the amount of time that's passed since the last time the board met, one of East Whiteland's members is no longer even living in the state anymore. So it necessitates that the township appoint a new, one new representative to this board. In addition to that, the agreement requires that members have relevant experience with either the building code and its interpretation, and also hold a professional certification such as an engineer and architect. James Jim Carr, as he's known, has expressed interest in filling the vacancy on behalf of East Whiteland, and is both experienced in interpreting the building code and owns his own business as a registered architect. So Township staff recommends the Board of Supervisors appoint Jim Carr to fill the vacancy, and it's a five-year term to the UCC Appeals Board.
Does he get compensation for such a position?
Members are compensated on a per-meeting basis, which is set by resolution annually by the Board.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, anything from the Board?
None.
None.
Peter, you want to make a motion to ratify?
I would gladly, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Jim Carr to the UCC Appeals Board.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Catherine, you're still up now?
All right, still up. So this is the item that I mentioned earlier on in grants. The township is at that time of year where LSA grants or local share account grants are due, this is the state gambling funds. These are very competitive grants because they require zero match for municipalities. So this cycle, we actually have two applications, so this is the first of another one that's going to be on the agenda. Multiple applications are allowed to be submitted. This one is an emergency services improvements package, and it's for $350,057 is what we're requesting. This is for emergency barricades. If you noticed the ones that were at Community Day, they are the type where if you drive upon them, they kind of, they're a unique design, kind of like an L-shaped design, so six lanes of traffic is what we're applying for, and it comes with a trailer as well, very similar to the ones that we borrowed from the county for that event, and also light standards to be able to use in a variety of applications where they're needed. So this resolution is to authorize the township to apply for that grant.
Any questions? Questions from the public? Rich, you want to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to approve Resolution 37-2025 for an LSA grant application for emergency services improvements.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it's passed three-nothing. You're still up?
I'm going to hand this one over to Bernadette.
Okay. Before you is the Resolution 39-2025, Chester County Tax Claim Bureau, not to collect the delinquent real estate taxes on behalf of East Whiteland. That resolution and the agreement, which is F on the agenda, is a pre-agreement for collection of delinquent real estate taxes and municipal claims on behalf of East Whiteland, and the ordinance under number five all go hand in hand in hand. So, I think Dave is here. Portnoy is a law firm that, that is all they do is collect delinquent taxes and municipal claims. Dave and Catherine have spoken to, I'm never going to say Kevin's last name, Furkus? Furkus. At Portnoy, in reference to the agreement, the resolution, and the ordinance, they will collect the delinquent taxes. We explained to them that the sewer, they also collect sewer, but we explained to them that's in the hands of Aqua, and it's probably not coming back to the township. So they recognized that, we included something in the agreement with Portnoy to indicate that, that the sewer is unlikely to be collected by Portnoy. It's mostly going to be the delinquent real estate taxes. So when you approve this resolution, it basically tells Chester County Tax Claim Bureau, Portnoy's going to collect, and they're going to recognize this because Portnoy collects a lot in Chester County. So the Chester County Tax Claim Bureau will understand that. I'm asking that we make the approval of this resolution subject to you entering into the agreement, which is the next motion, and the ordinance being adopted. So the resolution would only become effective if you adopt the agreement and adopt the ordinance.
Applies to both township and school taxes?
Actually, I believe they are already collecting the school district taxes, Portnoy is, yes.
And as far as the township goes, applies to both the real estate tax and the open space tax?
I don't know that there's any distinction, yeah, I think they would collect all delinquent real estate taxes, yes.
And delinquent is defined as past December 31st, then?
I don't know that we specifically said, but they, they do this so often, they are not going to, normally what their procedure is, they send letters, reminders, payment plans, so that type of collection work, they're not immediately going to court or anything like that.
Do they take care of leaning the property, or is that still the assessment office responsibility?
I believe they take care of leaning it, yep.
Okay, very good.
Any questions from the public? Any more questions? So, would you like to try to put together a combination? How do you want to do this?
Well, for the resolution, I just asked that, may I make a suggested motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution 39-2025, Chester County Tax Claim Bureau, not to collect delinquent real estate taxes on behalf of East Whiteland Township, subject to the agreement listed in 3F being approved, and subject to the ordinance being, in number five, being passed.
I'll second that as read by our Solicitor. Do I have a? Do I have a?
All in favor?
All in favor of the motion?
Yes. Aye.
Aye.
And passes.
Paul Scott did, Scott made the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got.
Who's up first?
And then 3F, as we discussed, is the agreement for the collection of the delinquent real estate taxes with Portnoy, and that is part of the ordinance package, so if you wanted to review that, that is in there. The initial term of the agreement expires on December 31st, 2028.
Looks fine.
May I make a suggested motion again?
Yes.
Yes. The suggested motion would be to approve the agreement for collection of delinquent real estate taxes and municipal claims on behalf of East Whiteland Township, subject to the resolution which you just approved, and subject to the ordinance, which is the subject of the public hearing under number five.
I second as read by our Solicitor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes.
Thank you. I'm done.
Enough. Moving on.
This is.
Neil?
This is the second LSA grant application. We're asking for a resolution to approve our application for pedestrian improvements, West Liberty Boulevard and Old Moore Hall, and also West Liberty and Route 29. This is a 450-odd thousand-dollar project.
And I'm understanding that if approved, this is kind of a wind start for another two or three years?
LSAs take a long time. It'd be quite a while to get the approval, and then the design process, yeah, a couple years, easy.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Seeing none, any questions from you gentlemen? Peter, would you like to make a motion?
I would, thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 40-2025, authorizing the submission of a statewide local share account grant application, which, for West Liberty Boulevard, for pedestrian improvements, for crosswalks and such.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Moving on to motion to award and motion to advertise. Dave? Regarding our budget information?
All right. All right, so to start off, our current draft of the 2026 general fund budget is currently balanced. This is our third meeting where we've discussed the budget. As you recall, our initial presentation of the budget did have a deficit that we worked through with the Board and the staff here to get it so that it is a balanced budget, and we were able to do that with no new taxes or fees in 2026. A couple of the new things that you'll see in this budget are a contribution of $80,000 to the Malvern Fire Company for advanced life support services. Malvern Fire Company has been providing ALS services to the township, but due to rising costs for that, it became more necessary for the township to make this contribution to Malvern Fire Company. This budget also enables the hiring of two employees. One is a Public Works Department laborer, which will go towards helping with the acquisition of, or maintaining the, all the new open space that has been acquired this year and upcoming acquisitions. There will also be a deputy chief in the fire and EMS. This person will be able to help Chief Lewis with the growing demands of the fire company, so that is something that is very much needed. The 2026 budget as presented right now has a four-and-a-half percent increase over the 2025 budget, and we'll kind of go through how we got there. So this is a summary of our revenues by department. Obviously, our largest revenue source is coming from our local enabling taxes, which is the earned income taxes, which account for just about 12.2 million. We also have our local services tax, which is included in that local enabling tax. We also have our real estate taxes, which account for 861,000. If you notice, there's no change from 2025. Couple of things that we have adjusted since our first iteration of the budget. The department revenues and fees, one thing we've done is a big push over the past two years has been billing developers for work that has been going on in the township, the township's using township consultants. These developers are responsible for those costs, so there's been a big push to send out these reimbursement requests, and in doing so, we've been able to increase the revenue with that, which matches the corresponding estimated expense. Now, obviously, if there's more development going on in the township, there's, the expense will go up, but so would the revenue. We've also increased our permit fees, our permit fee revenue. There's no changes in the permit fees themselves currently, but we've determined that, you know, over some of the past year's averages, we felt we could conservatively increase this permit revenue assumption and still. this permit revenue assumption and still, still be well under where we are this year. This year, a little bit of an anomaly with over three million dollars in permit revenue. Historically, we've been around the two point three million dollar range. So we think that being around two point one million is still pretty conservative. Moving on to expenditures, as I noted at the first budget meeting, one of the, the largest portion of the budget is for personnel costs. And that is obviously in kind of in line with most other municipalities, we're in the seventy to seventy-five percent range in terms of the percentage of the total budget. Again, that's to be expected when you have a full paid fire service, police department and public works department. Our largest expense within the general fund is, sorry, chief, the police department with just, just over seven million dollars. Our fire protection is around three, three point eight million. We can't all blame chief. The public works department is just about two point three million and then our administration is one point two million. Our total budget is, as proposed, is eighteen million, nine hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which is an increase from the 2025 budget of eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And a large portion of this is related to some of those hirings, contractual for the the union arrangements, the contractual salary increases, and then just sort of general overall price increases as we've seen in this inflationary economic environment. Since our last budget meeting, kind of going through some of the the changes that were made, one of the assumptions that we changed was the increase in fines and ordinance revenues by ten thousand dollars. We increased our local services tax assumption by fifty thousand dollars, which we feel is still in line with the current and historical LST revenues. As I mentioned, we did increase the reimbursed inspection services. I don't want to repeat myself here, so we'll kind of move on. But one of the things I wanted to point out, we were a little bit more conservative in our EIT assumption, which we did reduce by thirty thousand dollars, and that is in part due to Oracle leaving the township, the expectation that Oracle will be leaving the township at some point in 2026. On the expenses side, the biggest change was the reduction of four of the six requested staffing additions. As you recall, fire was looking to hire three additional firefighters so that one person could be on each shift for the fire. Unfortunately, it just, this year wasn't feasible in the current, the current environment, but something that will certainly be revisited, I think, in a coming year. Public Works Department had requested two employees. That was reduced to just one employee. A couple of the other things, we reduced our banking management fees. We've been talking with some possible new vendors who do not have banking management fees, so that would be, that was a reduction we were able to find. We decreased computer services. We've also been talking with some new vendors and the new vendors may be able to decrease their costs. And we're also working with our current vendor to see if there, there may be some reductions there. We removed twelve thousand dollars from the public works other contracted services. Basically, that was a, a buffer in case, you know, major snowstorms, if a third-party contractor needed to come in and assist our public works department, if it was, you know, a, a large storm. That is something that hasn't been used in several years, so we felt we could comfortably take that out of the budget. The other, one of the other bigger things was the reduction of twenty-five thousand dollars for our heart and soul program. That is something the board and our township manager have discussed. It's something that I think is still potentially going to be in the works, but it would be something where that full twenty-five thousand dollars would not be incurred in 2026. So, next slide, please. So just to summarize the changes that we've made since our, our last budget meeting to kind of show how we were able to decrease that million-dollar deficit that we initially had in the budget. And this is, this is a summary of it. A couple of the other things that we did, we are going to be transferring funds from the open space fund, twenty-five thousand dollars to account for, to partially offset the cost of hiring a public works employee who will be spending a lot of time working on some of these open space properties. And we chose that twenty-five thousand dollars because we feel it's kind of in line with the twenty-five percent that the act allows to be used from the open space tax revenue for maintenance purposes. As I mentioned, we increased the LST assumption, our fines, our reinspection, our reimbursed inspection services and permit revenues. And then even with the decrease in the EIT revenue and the other revenues, we still saw a net increase in revenues of about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. On the expenses side, we had the reduction of four staff, so that was a savings of five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. We did increase our parks and rec advertising expense. That was something that was discussed at the last budget meeting, just to make sure to, to give our parks and rec director a little more ability to advertise some of the programs that the township has begun offering in recent years. So in, in total, our net decrease in expenses was around seven hundred and five thousand dollars. So the, the net impact to reducing the deficit was just over one point one million dollars. So that's kind of how we got to this point where we have a balanced general fund budget.
Dave, if I can interject one second?
Yes.
Just so everyone is aware that following the second budget meeting, the board asked each department had to go through the numbers again and try to make further reduction. We wanted to see further reductions and appreciate all the, all of the staff that had input and on short notice and department heads for making adjustments to find savings and reduce expenditures. So thank you.
Next slide, Zach. Thank you. In discussion, in discussion with township management, there were a couple of things that were pointed out as potential decisions that that could be made for further reductions or increases in the budget. Some of the examples that were presented were some of the professional services, including dandelions for forty-two thousand. Dandelions has been doing a very good job for the township and its social media management and a lot of the work with the website. But that is a, that is a professional service that was just pointed out. Delta Development is an agency that has been providing grant support for the township. They've been very successful in helping the township obtain a couple of especially larger federal grants. There are some discussions with, with Delta to see if there's a way to maybe reduce those fees. And I believe that that will be an ongoing discussion that the township will have with Delta Development. There has been talk about looking for a consultant for internal fire and EMS staffing and that is something that has been, I, I actually haven't been a huge part of those discussions, but I know it's been brought up at some of the fire board meetings, I believe. And so other surrounding municipalities, I believe, have done similar studies. So that is something that I think the township is going to potentially consider for an upcoming point. We are also considering looking at refreshing the financial analysis that PFM, Public Financial Management, performed for the township back in 2018. We thought it would be good to kind of go back and now that we've, now that it's been seven years since that work was done, we thought it would be good to kind of get with them and, and see if things were tracking where they expected, the changes that were made in the years after 2018, have those aligned with where everyone was expecting things to go. So that is another thing that we are looking at for 2026. One thing that is currently in the budget is that, that usage of the twenty-five thousand dollars from the open space fund. That was something we wanted to especially point out to the board here and make sure everyone was satisfied with, with that decision. Then, of course, with the staffing request, there were, there were six requests for employees. We've now obviously gone down to just two, but that was something that we did as a way to balance the budget, but we didn't want to do that without, you know, full board input on that. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments? All right. And then, so for next year's budget process, so when we're doing, at this point next year, when we're looking at the 2027 budget, some of the things that, one of the goals, don't be too happy, Rich. See you. Is the, a ten-year capital plan. The township is very fortunate to have a good capital fund balance, but it is something that we want to make sure that we are being thoughtful in how we're spending down these funds over the next several years so that we can accomplish all of the projects that the township is looking to complete, especially with the grant funding, a lot of the grants have matches. So we just want to make sure that, you know, we do have the money available for years into the future for the township to continue making these excellent infrastructure and recreational improvements. Another thing I think we'd like to consider is doing planned transfer to capital funds. Earlier this year, we did make a transfer from surplus funds, so we think it's totally acceptable to not have to do that in 2026. But that is something that we may want to try and get into the habit of doing more regularly because we had been relying on some of the surpluses from prior couple of years. We want to be able to handle something if, you know, we break even or run a loss in a given year, that we still have a way, that we are still building up that capital fund balance. We also, for some of our forecasts for real estate transfer tax and permit fees, we'd like to get a little bit more conservative with these going forward. We are expecting that, you know, these will begin to tick downward a little bit as, you know, development slows in the township. And so with that, with the real estate transfer tax, as interest rates are coming down, we don't know how, what effect that's going to necessarily have on the housing market. So these are some areas where we would maybe like to be a little bit more conservative going forward. And they are so very kind of volatile revenues because it's not always known exactly what the real estate transfer taxes are going to be or how much development is going to be happening within the township. And then, of course, we may want to consider additional or new revenue sources. One of the main things, as mentioned earlier, was there, there was the request for the three additional firefighters to make sure that, you know, all of the standards are being met with our fire and EMS coverage. You know, certainly, everything is, is, is fine now and, you know, there's, there's no safety concerns really at the moment, but it is something that, you know, going forward, we want to make sure that there, there are enough firefighters that are responding to calls for the additional support for the firefighters that are there. And, you know, some of the ways to consider doing that, as well as the ALS costs, I should mention, that are also going up. So ways to kind of offset that may be new revenue sources in the future. Kind of running through some of our capital funds.
Dave, if I just jump in? Just so people understand, ALS is, there's two levels of service provided by the EMTs and the ALS is the higher level for the more severe cases. That's what the ALS.
Advanced.
Advanced life support.
Versus basic.
Basic life support. So we're talking those two terminology. That's the difference.
Yes, that, thank you. And that is, ALS is being provided by Malvern Fire Company, our fire company, and correct me if I'm wrong, is providing the basic life support, the BLS, right? So. So if anyone's wondering why we have ambulances, why, why are we paying another ambulance service and, and exactly to what Scott was mentioning? So our capital improvement fund here, I won't go through this in, in great detail. Right now, our revenues are two point seven million, which does include a transfer from the fund balance. Those are the reserves that I was referencing earlier. We are also expecting to be receiving some state, state grants. These are grants that have already been awarded to the township of about four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, as well as interest earnings. We do feel that interest earnings number is very conservative there. It'll probably end up being a lot higher, but this is, again, something that, you know, we're, we're going to be looking at as we get further into 2026. On the expense side, right now, we're looking, we, we do have a balanced capital improvement fund here of the two point seven million. I'm going to jump to our next couple of slides just so we can cover some of those projects. We'll start with our transportation projects. If you could move to the next slide, Zach, thank you. Our transportation projects, so one that's been talked about for a couple of years and that is very much an ongoing project are the Route 30 improvements. So right now, we're still in the engineering phase. There was a, a good presentation that was put on by Bowman at our last budget meeting where they talked through what, what those improvements along Route 30 would be. So this is going towards the engineering costs for that project. The other one is the Route 30 and 401 traffic signal and pedestrian improvements. This is something that has a, I believe it's a twenty percent match from the township. So the part that we are budgeting for is related to the township match for that. Our stormwater projects, this year, we have the, this, this grant is the, this is a grant funded project through the PA Small Water and Sewer Grant. It is a just under five hundred thousand dollar project with a grant in the amount of four hundred and twenty-three thousand, and that was the grant that we are anticipating from the state. This will be in the, as we call it, the village. The next.
General Warren Village.
General Warren Village. Thank you, Steve. The next one is the strategic projects. That is our zoning ordinance rewrite, our Delta Development, the one hundred and twenty thousand for the township branding and signage program, which has begun this year. We also have some municipal building improvements, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which include safety improvements in the lobby area, the squad room and lockers in the police department. Move on to our vehicle purchases. We have three police vehicles. This is keeping, this is in line with the normal process for the police where they are typically having three vehicles replaced each year. Within our highway department, we are going to have a new sweeper truck. The current sweeper truck, I believe, is almost twenty years old. And it gets a lot of work around here in the township, and so we are going to be purchasing that in 2026. There's also a new utility vehicle that the public works department is expecting to use, especially with this new acreage for the open space. And lastly, a zero-turn lawnmower. So our projected expenses for the vehicles is six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Moving on to equipment purchases, I'll cover some of just the larger ones here, our police tasers, body cam and vehicle cameras. This is a program through Axon where everything is sort of tied together. So this is part of a, is it a two-year project, chief, for the tasers and body cams? Am I remembering that correctly?
It's about a five.
Five-year program?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is, this is a portion of that and going towards updating the, the tasers and body cams for the officers.
Going forward, it should be around fifty to seventy thousand.
Okay. So there will be some, some ongoing costs associated with that, and I think a large part of that is due to the storage costs of all of the video and things like that that go along with the body and, and dash cameras. that go along with the body and dash cameras. Our fire department reporting platforms, that's the first due, powered DMS. This is $25,000. The wireless microphones, $32,000. Traffic signal controllers, $80,000. The township, as you know, the township maintains the traffic signals and owns the permits to the traffic signals even on state roads. So when traffic signal controllers need to be replaced, they can get expensive. We do have portable radios for fire in there, as well as other equipment, including the 45-foot man lift that the highway department is, is looking for. The next one is the park improvement fund. This one is just under $2 million. This is associated with the Parks and Recreation. And we'll go on to the next one, Zach, for the details of those projects, which are the, if you go to the next slide, Zach, please. Thank you. So this includes the Sidley Road Trail Connector, the Patriots Path, Moores Road sidewalk extension, Backton Hill Phase Two Engineering, Down East Park access, and then general playground fencing for a few of our parks, just for general safety. So that is a total of $1,998,000. Almost at the end. Getting, our next one is our liquid fuels budget. This is the money that comes in from the gas tax. We are anticipating receiving $389,000 from the state. We also have fund balance that we're looking to use for the resurfacing of roads. So we expect to spend $550,000 on repaving roads in 2026. And last, lastly is our open space budget. I'm sure you all well recall, from last year, the open space referendum was passed. This year, we have begun taking in open space tax revenue, which has come in through earned income taxes as well as real estate taxes. For 2026, we are anticipating just about $800,000 in real estate tax revenue and $370,000 in earned income tax revenue. We are also anticipating interest on these funds. We will also be using, we have just a little over $7 million remaining in the bond proceeds that are anticipated to be spent in 2026. Related with that land acquisition, our maintenance costs, as has been discussed at some of the open space meetings, 25%, it was decided that 25% of the revenue from the open space tax would go towards the maintenance of open space properties. And again, that's not any open space or park, that's just open space properties that have been acquired with open space funds. And then, of course, we have our debt service of $491,000 that is related to the bond that was issued earlier this year. And that is everything. We will have a draft of the budget available on the website. We'll also have a copy here at the township building for anybody that wants to inspect it. If anyone has any questions, either now or at a later point, feel free to email myself, davegrady@degradyeastwhiteland.org, or my Assistant Finance Director, Marco Augustini, mAugustini@eastwhiteland.org.
Can I ask you instead of emailing you?
You have to email, no, of course.
Just one small question, the vehicle purchases, those amounts are at the gross purchase price. They don't take into account any recovery from the sale of the old units, right?
That's correct. Yep, that 210,000 is the acquisition of the vehicles and the upfitting for those vehicles. But you're right, there, there would be an offset on the resale.
Right, okay.
I just wanted to clarify that there might be a few tweaks that we saw as you're going through this. So in our, in our motion to approve the advertising of the budget, we can still make some changes before the final vote in December, correct?
That's correct. Yep, we can, we, there, there are certain limitations on how big the changes can be, but, and it's 25% by department and 10% of the budget in whole, so.
It's only about 5 million.
Just pocket change.
Now, it's a few things, all right. Any questions from the public? Catherine, if you want to come up? I know, I'm always, I'm not, I'm getting the wrong. Kathleen.
It's okay, no problem, I don't mind. Two, I saw in the budget that the house at Valley Creek is being rehabbed. And I was just curious about what is going to happen to the house or what it's going to be used for.
I think it's still a work in motion. We've talked about a number of different things over the past year or so. I think the last might have been.
Someone lived there that, I know the couple that lived there beforehand. I was just wondering if that's going to be a thing.
So actually, after that, it was rather fortuitous that they moved out because the township came to find out after the fact that the house is not allowed to be used as a residence.
Okay.
Because of the grant funding that was used to obtain it. We did, last year, complete an analysis, a feasibility study on the structure to look at repurposing it for programming, which we fully intend to move forward with for, for right now. Our Public Works Director and his staff have been doing a really good job of making sure that it's watertight, you know, taken care of so that no critters move in to the facility. And we do actually use it as like a staging area in the summertime for our summer concert series and our movie in the park, things like that. So we are in and out of there, but we do hope to use it in more of a forward-facing capacity for like summer camp programming, something like that, moving forward.
Cool, very cool, nice to hear. And then, this is, might be random, but with all the grants that are happening with sidewalks and stuff and how Willistown and Malvern work so closely together, forever we've been seeking somehow for the village to get into Malvern. The kid, people walk on Warren all the time, and it's really, really dangerous. And then some kids, like my own, walk through spots. And sometimes the police told them that, you know, it's not supposed to happen that way, but it was a safer way to do it. But I was just wondering if there's an avenue for us. I know most of that road on Warren is Malvern's in, in the borough. But is there anything, you don't have to answer now, but is there an avenue that we could take to possibly see if we can make a closer connection to the Malvern Borough from, from the village? And who do we talk to? Do we have to go to Malvern?
Is there a road? But the first I would start with, Chris?
I love that possibility.
Well, so.
There's definite need.
So let's talk. So whenever, now's not the time, I know, I just wanted to plug that in, but let's, you know, let me know.
Is there another, to your experience, there is another way other than the road itself without crossing over other properties?
Well, Multumore, more, Multumore, I think owns some of that, and I think that's a property. Then someone was trying to sell that steep slope if you're coming north. It's on the west side of Warren, if you're coming down. Someone tried to sell that to builds on it, and it was turned down. So I don't know who owns that piece, though. It's something I would love to continue to investigate.
Sure.
Right, just for the record, I don't, like, the police don't or can't do anything as far as, it's not a matter of, you know, making something up for that.
And for people walking on a road in Malvern, you have no jurisdiction anyway.
No, I mean, there's, it doesn't, there's no rule against walking along the side of a road, generally. I mean, unless Malvern has something special. But it's just, when you are, you become a pedestrian, and it's just not a safe place. I do agree with that.
Any other questions, gentlemen? So thank you, Dave, for all the info. And so, Peter, would you like to make a motion to approve the advertising for the budget?
Yes, I would, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve advertising, as so well read by Dave, the 2026 budget for all funds for adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chris, you want to? Work, work the car angle?
So speaking of cars, we have two cars that have served their useful existence as a police vehicle. So the one is a 29, they're both 2019s. One has, it's a Ford Explorer Police Interceptor, has 88,470 miles, and probably more now, since this was written. And a 2019 Dodge Charger with 88,557 miles. So that's about the area where we'd sell them. So we have two new ones that we've ordered already that we're trying to get in before the end of the year, but it's, it's been a while. So we're hoping to get them in right around Christmas.
That sounds like an awesome Christmas present. Should I make a motion?
Sure, Peter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve for the police to advertise on municipal bid, the 2019 Ford Explorer and the 2019 Dodge Charger for sale.
I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Passes. Just before we go into public hearings, I, I see out in the audience that someone, I just want to point out to everyone, just to be aware, we had, we had supervisor elections this year as Rich is going to be retiring. And as past 11 or 12 months, Clinton Smith is in the audience tonight. If we could just stand up, raise hand. You'll be seeing him up here going forward. So, thanks, Clinton. Okay, public meeting, I will turn it over to Bernadette and Catherine.
And this, I'm going to open up a public hearing as indicated on the agenda. This is a public hearing for ordinance approving the appointment of solicitor, interest assessment, and attorney's fees and collection fees added to the amount collected as part of the unpaid real estate taxes and municipal claims for delinquent accounts. As we had gone through the resolution and the agreement, this is now the ordinance. So I am going to mark a series of exhibits. B1 will be the November 3rd email and letter to the Daily Local News with legal notice and proposed ordinance. B2 will be the November 3rd, 2025 email and letter to the Law Library with a copy of the attested proposed ordinance. B3 will be the agreement for collection of delinquent real estate taxes and municipal claims on behalf of East Whiteland Township. Before the resolution directing Chester County Tax Claim Bureau not to collect delinquent real estate taxes on behalf of East Whiteland Township. B5 is the proof of publication for November 4th. And B6 is the proposed ordinance. So Section 1 of the ordinance lays out the attorney's fees and collection fees to be added to the unpaid claims and that Portnoy is going to collect. Section 2 discusses the interest and the rate of 10% to be added to the unpaid claims. Section 3 is the appointment of Portnoy to collect these unpaid delinquent taxes. And so if the board has any specific questions in reference to the ordinance?
I have none.
I have no, I have no questions. Anything from the public?
At this time, then, I would close the public hearing, and we would go back to the public meeting, and I'd ask for a motion to approve the ordinance.
Rich, would you like to make a motion?
Yep, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance approving a deployment of solicitor, interest assessment, and attorney's fees and collection fees to be added to the amount collected as part of the unpaid real estate taxes and municipal claims for delinquent accounts. Until now, the county didn't do that for us, right, the assessment office?
They did do it for us, yes. Did you say that?
We still have to do this because we're now, we're doing it private, right?
I'm sorry, say that again, Rich, I missed, I might have missed the first thing you said.
We still, we still have to do this now because we're doing this privately through Portnoy.
Yes, the board is, that's the reason we're passing the ordinance, yes.
Okay.
Motion made.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes.
Thank you.
Do you want to, do we make something officially to pull out of the public hearing?
No, I closed it.
We did close it. All right, we're closed for the public hearing. And I will move on to Planning and Development, Section 6, and turn it over to Zach Barner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item here is for development at 43 Lancaster Avenue. It's for the daycare at the former Friendly's site. At the last meeting, the board authorized staff and solicitors, Office 2, draft a, an approval resolution. It's Resolution 38, 2025. It's the normal standard conditions of approval, payment of fees, recording of plans. But there's also project-specific conditions related to some of the traffic and parking operations that were discussed last month. There are specific conditions that kind of expand upon their operations plan. They have provided as part of the plan. And otherwise, it's, it's mostly standard conditions, compliance with the previous zoning hearing board approval, et cetera. So with that, I'll, I'll kick it over to applicant's counsel if there's any questions. But otherwise, this isn't a position for the board to, to vote on this evening.
I have nothing to add, so, again, Leonard Alteri for the applicant. But if there are any questions, I'm here to facilitate that.
We have seen this before. As long as all the comments are addressed from the hour letters, and it seems ready to go.
The resolution's been drafted, provided to the applicant, and approved by the applicant.
Yeah, we provided to them, they've said that they have no, that's Scott trying to get back in. They have no requested changes or anything like that, they're accepting of the conditions that were drafted. And to your point, always, they are conditioned upon satisfying all the comments. So prior to recording the plan, they'll have to demonstrate that they've satisfied all the letters, paid fees, procured easements for like the cross-access for the, sort of that northeast entrance off of, into Valley Brook, shopping, it's not Shopping Center, but Valley Brook Center.
Any questions on this one? This is the daycare instead of the Friendly's.
No, other than the, and I probably missed it, but just, just, my, my concern last time was just the discussion pertaining to putting in the information into the traffic planning information that was handing out to resident, or the customers to give them notice of entrance exits in the back. That was my big concern.
And that is, again, as Zach said, this was provided to us. We have no issues with anything that has been provided with regards to the overall resolution. There is on page 5, paragraph 6, it specifically outlines that exact concern that you had, Mr. Chairman, that we would provide that information to the parents or anyone else who's going to be utilizing the daycare. And again, my client has no objection to anything outside of the other conditions that were. And again, my client has no objection to anything outside of the other conditions that were imposed that we discussed from the last meeting.
Any questions for the public? Okay.
Okay.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve land development O2, twenty twenty-five for forty-three Lancaster Avenue. And in accordance with the resolution approved by the township and the applicant.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And passes three oh.
Uh, next one here is simply for an extension, this is the amended land development plan for Penn State for their parking reclamation, or fancy word for removal. They're amending their land development plan to create some new green space and adding a trail. We discussed this a few months back, we're simply waiting on a resubmission from them in response to our previous comments and some of the direction that was given by the board a few months back. So we expect a resubmission soon, this carries us through March.
Easy one.
Have you heard anything or just resubmission?
No, we, we haven't, we reached out just for an update and we, we thought we'd have something actually, you know, in the meantime from drafting this agenda to the meeting tonight, but we haven't seen anything, so.
Very good.
Would you like to make a motion, Peter?
I'd like to make a motion for an extension of time for, uh, the Penn State parking reclamation, ALD dash zero eight dash twenty twenty-four.
Right, out until three thirty-one thirty-six, or twen- March thirty-first twenty-six.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, until, it's amended final land development plan until three thirty-one twenty twenty-six.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And pass.
Uh, next item here is a presentation of a sketch plan. This is for a proposed phase three of the approved master plan for the Great Valley Corporate Center redevelopment. So the, the first phase is currently under construction for multifamily along Route twenty-nine, just south of Great Valley Parkway, across from Valley Creek Park. Second phase was for an R and D facility along Great Valley Parkway, and this is for a a third phase that would incorporate additional lands into the overlay district. So there's a corresponding petition, petition to amend the zoning map and text to accommodate that. Without getting too far into it here, I'll kick it over to the applicant's legal counsel. I think they also have some of their other consultants here to present the plan. And I will pull up the plan on screens.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Zach, are we skipping Malvern Courts?
Yes, that, that got, that got pulled.
Oh, that got pulled, okay.
Late, late this afternoon.
I did not realize that.
Yep.
Excuse me.
Yeah, sorry about that, I skipped right over it. They are actually withdrawing that application. And we met with the homeowners actually this afternoon to talk about, you know, sort of where that stands and some options to kind of address some of the issues that they've experienced out there, which I can elaborate on later. But the subdivision plan is being withdrawn at this time. So no need for an extension, in other words.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Good catch.
Thank you, Chief. Which you all well know is PSDC Malvern One LLC. You've been participant in approving two phases of development of a master plan in the Great Valley Corporate Center for this particular vision. We are now moving on to the third phase, we're at the very preliminary early stages of this particular proposed development. It includes two parcels. There is a parcel at five Country View Road, which I believe all of you have referred to as sixth Great Valley Parkway for quite some time, as well as a parcel at three twenty-five Technology Drive. So these, thank you very much. So as you'll see, these are on two different sides of Route twenty-nine. And they're proposing a Sheetz convenience store with gasoline service and a child daycare center on the lower parcel. So this is five, I'm sorry, it's five Country View Road. And then across the street, you will see a proposed development of an approximately one hundred and forty unit multifamily with both underground and surface parking. Now, these uses are not permitted outright in the existing OBP zoning district. So our first step in moving forward with this project is a petition for a zoning map and ordinance amendment. And that is also pending before you this evening, we submitted that at the end of October. I recently had an opportunity to amend that zoning application in order to be able to narrow the use that we are actually proposing. So to walk you through this just a little bit, at this stage, this sketch plan that you're looking at is not a traditional sketch plan in that we're looking to immediately file land development. This sketch plan was submitted so you all would have a general idea what we're proposing when we, when we go through this proposed ordinance amendment. So the ordinance amendment is twofold, first of all, it is rezoning the parcels that you see for phase three to include them within the GVR overlay district consistent with the other phases of the master plan. And as well as doing a text amendment. That text amendment is extremely limited. So in the GVR district, the child daycare center use that's proposed, the convenience store portion of the Sheetz use that's proposed, and the multifamily residential or all permitted uses in the GVR overlay district. Our text amendment specifically only asks to add gasoline service station to the GVR overlay district in order to accommodate that portion of the Sheetz convenience store use. So no other area in bulk requirements are being proposed to be amended at this time. We are planning on continuing to work with staff and your township consultants on determining whether the design standards for the overlay district that would be applicable need to be amended. But at this time, the only thing that we're really looking to review and to chat about any detail is the petition for the rezoning. Now, just so you understand, this, this whole project is going to require quite a bit of input from you all, from your planning commission, from your staff, from your consultants. We're at the very preliminary phases of phase three. We anticipate that we're gonna have to go through a master plan approval to incorporate these parcels into the overall existing master plan that we will have to go through land development. We would propose to probably do that contemporaneously to do the land development application and the master plan approval at the same time. I think that makes a little bit more sense, but not set in stone. All very much waiting for input and discussion with the township to make sure that we're on the same page moving that forward. So your consultants were kind enough to put together some review letters for us with our initial submission of the sketch plan back in September. We've reviewed those comments. We don't really have any major issue with those comments, but there's something that the review letters contemplate and that we would contemplate working forward through during master plan. So we anticipate that when we do the master plan and when we do the land development plan, these comments will get incorporated into those plans when they are submitted. And there'll be discussions on those going forward. Most of these, the comments that we got in the sketch plan are very much land development topics. So for purposes of tonight, just know that we don't have to solve all of the problems and all of the issues and any concerns you may have. We're really just here to talk a little bit about the ordinance amendment, address any initial concerns or questions you all may have and, and do what we can to move this forward. We anticipate, you know, we'll continue to work with staff on this proposed amendment. We'd really just like you all to be comfortable enough with it to be able to move it forward for further review by the planning commission, county planning commission. And it, as you know, will ultimately come back before you for a hearing to make sure that it's, it's what you all want to see. I am joined this evening by Paul Leopard from Nave Newell, who's doing our engineering design on the site, as well as Eric Ostenchuk from TPD, who's handling the traffic, as he has for phase one and phase two as well. You all know these folks, you're familiar with them, so feel free, shoot, discuss, questions, anything, we're an open book right now.
The housing unit is gonna have how many?
We're, we're anticipating approximately one hundred and forty units. And I did forget to mention, and this is probably the most important thing I'll say tonight, the developer is actually really excited about your workforce housing ordinance and taking that for a test run on the site. Obviously, he, he has to, it's an ordinance that's on the books, but he's, he's actually really looking forward to figuring out how that's gonna work and is really charging forward on that, has taken a liking to that and wants to figure out how to make this work.
I see the ordinance provides for a minimum of ten to twenty percent range. Has he considered whether it will be more than the minimum yet?
I can certainly bring that up with him, I don't think he has thrown out an actual number yet trying to figure out how it's going to work. I think is probably step one.
So he contemplate that this would be connected to the existing, you know, apartment building buildings that are going up as part of one, one complex of it, or a different operation?
I think he was contemplating this as a separate project, that doesn't mean that there can't be some sort of connection between the two. But Gray Star is really spearheading that development, and at this time they are not identified as a developer of this phase three.
How many units are total in phase one?
Paul, do you know the answer to that? Is it four hundred? Okay.
It's part of the four hundred age restricted and part non. Do you remember the number? I, I don't. Okay. The difference, right? Okay. Is it only the, the two sixty-seven building that's under construction now, or are they both under, cause they at the same time? Okay, they both intended to be or planned to be brought online together? All right, okay.
The multifamily homes is, I know this is a really early question. My, my concern's always for pressures on the school district. So one of my things I wanted to limit with phase one was that I kind of came into the discussions too late on was to limit the amount of three-bedroom houses in there.
At this time, what I've been told is that the, that the owner developer is okay with limiting this to just one and two-bedroom units. That is something that has been mentioned in our initial discussions with the Township Development Committee and with staff. At this time, I've not heard anything different than that, that he is, he is agreeable to keeping this limited in, in terms of bedrooms for that very reason, to limit the amount of school children that would be as a result of this development.
That's good to hear.
Yep.
I'm sorry. When we're looking at the, at the two parcels, is the amendment being proposed? Is it comprehensive, or can those two be broken into two parts?
I'm not sure I fully understand.
You're proposing-
Do you need one without the other?
Oh, I think it's being proposed as a, as a cohesive project at this time. We've not been told that, that it would be broken out, I don't know in terms of the land development timing if it would be further broken out into sub-phases, like one would go forward and then the other. But I think, at least at this point in time, the idea is to have those happening together.
Okay, would you consider splitting them?
It's not been proposed, I can ask, but I, I think the idea was to, to do the rezoning. Is, is the concern of doing the rezoning on both of them at the same time, or is the concern about developing them at the same time?
I think the concern would be that the usage of one versus the other parcel. One may be approved and one may not be approved. Or there could be concerns about one parcel over another.
Do, do you mind elaborating a little bit, just because I want to make sure that we've got the full? Is it, is it the multifamily that would be the more objectionable development?
Well, we, we've got a, we've got a situation, A is, is that we've got a supervisor who'll be stepping down in, in January when this really becomes ongoing. And then we have a, go ahead.
And terribly upset about missing. Being involved with this decision.
I will personally send you an invite, should you like to just come and sit through.
Feel free.
Rich made, Rich made not less than three phone calls me this afternoon complaining about that. He was really distraught, but then we have a, a sitting supervisor who would be making the decisions, that's not up here having the conversation, so.
Certainly.
I don't want to talk for everybody, but I'm just, I'm just looking at and saying, well, one, one piece may may be amenable and the other piece may not be, or vice versa, or may, you know, maybe, maybe both pieces are. Again, just wondering your temperature as far as splitting the two projects.
I, I have been advised that he's looking to move both of these forward at the same time. I've not heard anything other than that.
Is this the remaining parcels owned by PSDC?
I think they may actually own another parcel in this immediate vicinity.
All right, you know which one, or?
I don't off the top of my head.
They own the grade out property between the two phases, excuse me.
Yeah, that's right.
And they also own property in Atwater.
Yeah.
Near the slip ramp.
Oh, right, 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 yep. I'm familiar with that, yep, okay.
A, a question, and I don't necessarily expect you to have the answer tonight, or, or Paul, but to, kind of to Scott's point. You mentioned there's no proposed changes to the floor area ratios or anything like that. I'm curious if the, if that's still the case, if just one of the two components were to move forward, or if you need all the land mass to accomplish no changes to the floor area ratios and like the proportions thereof.
We'd probably have to look at that a little closer. All of our analysis and all the plans at this time are a master plan analysis based on the full phase three build-out.
Sure, makes perfect sense, I just, it might be good to just maybe run the numbers both ways in case that question comes up again later.
Sure can.
Hey Gina, to follow up on Rich's question, the, the parcel that is between phase two and the apartment building of the proposed phase three, is there a reason that property is not included?
No idea.
You don't know?
That's in the overlay.
It's not included right now. It's included in the master.
So, so it is, it is part of the overlay, but is a building that's being used in, okay, all right, thank you.
When you did the master plan calculations, is that parcel included in the master plan analysis? Okay.
Is that building in between two and three fully occupied? Or largely? Okay, on the long-term situation, you think, okay, all right.
So, so why change the use then?
That one is not part of phase three. So the, the property that we're currently discussing is immediately adjacent to phase three.
Oh, that one, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay.
There's no, there's nothing in phase three currently, is what you're saying, no structure?
So-
No current use?
There is an office building, I believe, on the northern portion of phase three that is proposed to be demolished on the lower portion of phase three. A little bit of history there, so that was previously demolished. There was, it was an office building at one point. In two thousand and fifteen, Liberty got a land development approval for a hundred and twenty thousand square foot office building on that site. They went all the way through the process of posting financial security, putting their agreements in place. They even went through and put their traffic improvements in place. They did all of their traffic improvements for that development and never ended up building the building. So that is not, it's not a greenfield site, we're not worrying about natural resources or mature trees that would be demolished or anything like that, the site's prime for redevelopment, it just doesn't, it's not been built at this point.
Does the topography lend itself to putting the building, the proposed residential building closer to the existing office building? Or not? Is there a compelling reason to not keep it away from the office building?
You're asking to basically move the actual residential building further to the west. Yeah. Or plan west, but to the south, yes.
Good evening, Paul Leopard with Naive Noel. The the reason the building placement is where it is is so we can take advantage of the site topography. And have the ability to tuck parking underneath the building as it steps down. And so that that was the thought process in 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 terms of the the site placement.
The base zoning on both of these parcels right now is the same.
That's correct. So they're both in the O B P district. However, I will say that the. Property at Five Country View Drive also happens to be in the multimodal overlay.
That's the gas station and daycare, correct?
Yes.
My concerns with the housing units are the the density. It's getting to be. A very dense population in in Office Business Park, which. I'm not thrilled about. I'm not thrilled about too much. Housing development in the industrial park. I still have the dream of it. Being that I understand it's not always going to be that and we have to put it in selectively where we can. But my concern is we're starting to over. Over stuff a portion of our our corporate center. That's my concerns. And as I stated before, the concerns with the school districts for increases in child populations through development. And to back up to the country view, I think that in my opinion would be a a good use. I I guess we. Could use some gas station competition along twenty nine. And daycares always seem to be of a need.
They fill up fast.
They do.
On on that on that parcel, just initially. I think they're gonna, in my opinion. Is gonna need to be adjustments to the entrance to twenty nine from those two. Two buildings if if they go forward to getting on twenty nine.
You mean directly, a direct entrance?
Yeah.
Traffic thing, yeah.
And or I I see I see a conflict between. Traffic coming from the daycare, coming into the direction of the. Sheets and all the activity that's usually surrounded by that. A lot of a lot of motor vehicle movement and pedestrian movement. The way I way I'm seeing it right there. I I could be wrong, but. Just initial thoughts on it. The other thing I I was I was just inquiring about would be. At one point in time, there was some discussion that that J and J was looking for like a campus type. Development throughout there and that might include some of the housing. Would this be marketed towards J and J and that campus concept?
I think that's certainly a possibility. I don't, you know, I wouldn't limit that at this point in time, but I think that's certainly certainly an option. Johnson and Johnson.
They've got a pretty good sized facility in there and they're looking. They're looking for expansion. Just a couple ideas that I had.
No, appreciate it.
So the the issue or the request to the board this evening is to give comment which been given probably more. And then say to you it's okay or consider the comments before you asking us to. Approve going to the planning commission. That's pretty much where we are tonight.
So what we would hope the board would be comfortable enough with at least the petition for zoning amendment. To authorize it to be reviewed by the Township Planning Commission, the County Planning Commission and to be scheduled in the future. For hearing to consider the amendment.
Guess the way it works is we could say go ahead, but even regardless of what the County Planning Commission. Or the Township Planning Commission thinks or recommends. The board still doesn't have to go forward and say, okay, let's hold a hearing for the petition, correct?
That's my understanding. You all would have to authorize the advertisement of a hearing on this.
With the zoning text amendment applied to the daycare and the gas station?
So the zoning text amendment would be to include these parcels in the G V R overlay in which they are not currently included. And also to add the gas station use to the G V R overlay as a permitted use.
That's why I was asking if it could be split. Again, I just just from this level, I I'm just concerned with with Rich leaving and what what the. The new board member Clinton will will have to weigh in on this. In twenty twenty six, so I I'm kind of I kind of feel as though I'm looking at this is. Thanks for the preview and something for us to think about, but I. I don't think it's probably in our best interest at this point in time to really move forward with anything of major. Importance, again, because I don't know what's going to happen going forward.
Understood. So it's all Rich's fault.
You'll have to stand in line.
Gina, just out of curiosity, the the gas station with the pumps in the back.
Yes.
Is that something that Sheets is committed to?
I think that's something that our client is pretty committed to.
Okay.
At this point. Sheets is still reviewing the plan and that's why this is very much a sketch plan. It's possible that this, you know, gets adjusted here or there.
Yeah, my only concern is if the board really wanted it in the back and then she changed her mind in the front. It's just something to be considered.
Also, I will pass that along.
Yeah, my my other concern is the daycare sometime well their playground, I assume is going to be in the back and they may say that she's. Move the gas to the pump. We don't want them near the playground.
Yeah, there's certainly going to have to be some negotiations with these tenants to make sure that everybody's getting what they need.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. No, you're fine. I'm I'm fully aware. Reminiscent.
Again.
No, I I appreciate the input. We do. We appreciate the early input. It sounds like maybe we need to lay back for a month or so, let things settle out. I think some of your comments are are certainly valid. I think we can probably take a look at the plan a little bit closer as well. Maybe we we come back, maybe talk to the planning commission in December, make sure we hold this off until January before anything official is actually done.
I think it could be more productive that way. Sorry for.
No, no, no.
I know, I know. I know that some of the information about maybe pushing it off was conveyed to Lou, but you wanted to go forward and. That that's fine, that's fine. I can help you on the process here early.
But even with that, there's been a number of review letters already anyway. You can take these comments, those comments and and spend December thinking about.
Sitting by the fireplace reviewing.
I can picture it now.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Paul, thank you. Zach, anything else you would like to add?
Not specific to that, no.
Okay. Sounds like the voice is just about to be going out the door anyway. John, if you can. Bring us up with the zoning and code enforcement issues.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the month coming up, we have two applications before that'll be before the zoning hearing board. The first is the application of Sparks Car Wash, who you heard from on their preliminary. Presentations last month. The properties in the O B P Business Park Services District on which currently a vacant gas station is located. The application is for special exception for use and multiple variances to allow for development. And with encroachments to setbacks of the improvements and reduce the number of parking spots required.
Get a car wash. So thank you very much. Thank you very much and good evening, everyone. Again, Leonard Outs here with the law firm of Claire Harrison, Harvey Brandsburg in Center City, Philadelphia. Representing the applicant this evening, which is Spark Car Wash for the subject property located at one forty one South Moore Hall Road. I have with me this evening, in addition to myself, is is Nick Lewis, our civil engineer from Bowler. We also have a representative from Spark Car Wash as well if there's any operational questions, but also for him to. Provide essentially an overview of what Sparks does with regards to their customer base. Zach, can you put the the plans up just so it's on there? What I handed up to the board earlier was just an exhibit packet, A one through A four, just so we're on the same page. A one are the aerial and the existing conditions. A two are some site photos. A three is a proposed site plan and A four are proposed building elevations. Now. One thing to note is with the proposed building elevations, these are subject to change, but I know that there was a comment from. The board when we came in for our sketch plan last month, that there was, you know, some desire to see what they would look like. So we're open and amendable to any comments from the board of supervisors, but we did add them in there just to kind of show you kind of what our national brand. Looks like. As I said, we were here last month to give a sketch plan overview. And what we have tonight is more of an engineered plan. If you just want to go to tab three, Zach. Well, get to go to four. It's a little colorized. It looks nicer. I'm sorry, go back to three. It's second page. There you go. Perfect. So again, the property right now is located in the O. B P S Office Business Park and Corporate Gateway Overlay District. It's currently a vacant former gas station. The applicant is proposing a full redevelopment of the subject property, including a proposal for a four thousand approximately four thousand. Nine hundred and forty square foot car wash. The current site has a one right in, right out onto Route twenty nine. And two right in, right outs onto the driveway to Sweets Ford Road. The proposed plan would close the existing Route twenty nine access and the western Sweets Ford Road access. And only provide one right in, right out driveway along Sweets Ford's road by itself. Matt Hammond, who was our professional engineer, excuse me, who's our traffic engineer from T P D can't be here this evening. But you know, we'll try to address as much of the the traffic if there is any of those questions. As part of the redevelopment of this property, we will need to go to the zoning hearing board for a few variances. The first one is going to be a special exception with regards to the actual use itself. So we are seeking special exception relief. Nick Lewis, our professional engineer, will walk through these. Variances in greater detail than the other remaining ones, with the exception of parking, are all kind of dimensional variances. Because we have, you know, a kiosk, you know, within the front yard setbacks or roads, or excuse me, we're in the setbacks from the roadway, et cetera. We are in receipt of the following review letters from Thomas Committee Thomas Comida dated September fifteenth. The R O letter dated September ninth, land concepts dated September twenty fourth. Fire marshal dated September twenty fourth and the traffic letter from Bowman also dated September twenty fourth. All those are going to be a will comply. We have no issues with any of that. So it's up to the board how you want to handle this. I can have or come up and talk about Spark Car Wash and what amenities we're going to be bringing to the community. Or we can jump right into the engineering aspect of this and really get into the variances that we're seeking and why we need them as part of this application. However, you want to do it, Mr. Chairman, understanding the lateness of the hour.
I I think you've kind of described the first first portion and the last meeting, so if we go into part two and three. More detail.
So we'll bring up Nick Lewis. And we'll have Nick start walking through the requested relief that we have here.
Good evening. Good to see you all again. As Leonard already walked through this plan, I'll walk through again just so everyone's oriented. As we are looking at the screen right now, we're at the corner of War Hall and Sweetsford. Like Leonard alluded to, we are removing one curb cut off of War Hall and then removing one off of Sweetsford. And then proposing a a farther down curb cut off of Sweetsford, which was under the direction of Penn Dot. To move that intersection as far away as possible. After that, we do have our two queuing lanes that run through on the left side of the property running down to where you have access to the car wash. What you can see there is a bailout lane. If you're in a dual axis pickup truck that doesn't fit through the car wash, you can utilize that bailout lane. To get out and get access to the vacuum stalls. If you do go through the car wash, you come back through the vacuum stalls and then you would be able to. Come back out, go off of or exit the site off of. Through the right end, right out or curb cut on Sweetsford. Like Leonard spoke to, we are requesting a few variances. I'll just run through quickly. Stop me if I'm going too fast. As Leonard Leonard noted, we are asking for a special exception for the use. We are asking for a variance from section two hundred thirty seven attachment seven to permit the pay kiosk to. Be located thirty nine point six feet from the arterial arterial street, War Hall Road, whereas fifty feet is otherwise permitted. A variance from two hundred thirty seven attachment seven to permit a building setback of three point two feet from the property line, whereas ten feet is otherwise permitted. A variance from section two hundred thirty seven attachment seven to permit a maximum coverage of or maximum lock coverage of. Sixty three point six percent, whereas fifty percent is permitted. A variance from section two hundred dash thirty seven attachment seven to permit. A minimum parking setback from arterial streets of four point two, whereas twenty feet is otherwise permitted or required. A variance from section two hundred dash thirty seven attachment seven to permit a minimum parking setback from property line. Of three point seven feet, whereas five feet is otherwise required. And a variance from section two hundred dash seventy to provide fifteen parking spaces, whereas twenty five parking spaces is otherwise required.
And then Zach, if you can, can you just go just so we go to the site photos so that the board, for those who aren't familiar with it, it's going to be the next one. The site number, page number, tab number two, excuse me. This is the existing site. So what we're proposing to do is a whole redevelopment of it again. And I think there's two or three more photos here, Zach, from just different angles. A vacant gas station convenience store and then if you go to tab four. You scroll down, you get an idea of what it is that we're proposing to bring into the community. So to really really revitalize that intersection, revitalize that parcel, make it a, you know, a productive parcel for the community.
Can you show variance number three and five? Point to it on the plan?
So just so we're on the same page.
So for the first one, it is the permit a building setback for three point two feet as opposed to ten. Is that? Correct, so. The orientation of the building sits close to the rear property line. However, it is far away from the Homewood Suites that that sits next to the property. And then. And then number four is on my list is a permit a maximum lot coverage of 63.6% as opposed to the 50% required. Number five, a variance for 4.2 from a parking setback from arterial streets. Zach, if you go to the plan above, it's just a little bit clearer. I'm going to slide over here. Correct. Part of the queuing.
And then obviously and then obviously, one thing that also impacts just the layout of this is just the irregularity of the shape of the parcel itself. So, which kind of constrains us a little bit on how we're able to lay this out. There was discussion.
I'm sorry. I'm not sure if it was, if we really explored or not. Just one question I've got. If you end up having the queuing of the cars, if you're having a full, a full, strong day, is there any with the variations that you're asking for? Are there any sight lines that are going to be potentially impacted along Sweetsford? Yeah, where's that traffic? Where's that traffic engineer? It looks wide open. It looks wide open. I'm just asking that.
So, the question is if there's queuing, you know, running back up to the intersection, if they can be able to look and get out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it is.
Concerned about the sight lines with the traffic on Sweetsford there?
Understood. As it's designed right now, it would meet PennDOT's requirements for sight lines. You know, we're not going to propose a tree right up against there if there are cars. Rich is shaking his head no on that one. If there are cars pulled into the lot, we don't anticipate all backing up onto Sweetsford. We anticipate them being on the actual property itself and therefore having clear sight lines. And then I'll let Orr jump in on operationally how that would be handled.
Good evening. I'm Orr Raitis from Spark Car Wash. So, I think the question you're asking in terms of visibility on the right turn, if you're going to be able to see to the right, I think, again, like you mentioned, the radius would allow for that. But we also don't expect, like you said, it would be maybe on the one or two busiest days of the year where we would even have vehicles up and beyond that, the initial curve there. We do have, when we do expect those extremely busy days, we normally have three employees there. One to help at the pay stations, one to help guide cars into the tunnel itself, and one to help manage the lot, whether that's cleaning, restocking, or assisting customers as they're service, taking care of their vehicles at the vac stations. That same employee, where there would probably be an additional one, if it was going to be one of those extremely busy days where it's usually the first nice day after a snowstorm and everybody's car is filled with salt. We could have a fourth person that would also help manage traffic flow. So, if we see that things are backing up, we'll actually temporarily prohibit people from entering the site until things do back up, clear out. It's about 45 seconds every car that enters into the tunnel. So, there's what's not shown here. There's about probably five cars in the tunnel if it is running through. And so, the cars do move through relatively quickly. We do also have the ability to speed things up if necessary. Obviously, we prefer to run it at the optimal speed just from a customer experience standpoint. But it is a relatively quick wash and quick experience once you get through there. The other thing that we do in order to mitigate slowdowns is you can see the pay station is located about six cars or actually, in this case, it's eight cars away from the entrance to the tunnel. So, people have already paid. Their wash has been processed. So, you're not slowing anybody down as you really got a continuous flow of cars going through that tunnel. So, you're not slowing anything down. So, you really are able to process cars. So, one thing that I know the board brought up last time was the concern of the backups on the existing car wash that's in the town currently that runs a similar model of express. When you design a site for express wash, you design it with the idea of high volume because that is part of the whole business model is memberships and getting people through sites. When you convert existing sites, which is the case in a lot of express washes that exist today in the market, they're just not as, their site plans aren't set up for that volume. So, when we, when we look at this site plan, we engineer it in a way so that we can process a lot of cars through the site. And that's why we were confident that we won't have those kind of conflicts where you might see that on an existing site.
Do whether, decide whether to send or solicit for opposition. I have no problem with not doing that and letting the zoning hearing board do their job.
I apologize. I think you told us this before. There are 15 parking spaces. Are all the parking spaces have vacuums?
Yes. So, as you could see on the plan, every space is planned to have vacuums. Normal operations, you're not going to be using all 15 vacuum spaces. You will have some employees parking in those spaces. On those busy days, like I mentioned, we know when they're coming. We, our operations team is proactive in either having people carpool in. Not all of our employees also drive to the site. Some take public transportation, bicycles, things like that. But we will also then proactively send them Ubers or Lifts to help them come to the site so as to minimize any non-productive parking on the site. So, on those busy days, we do that. But otherwise, there would be two or three vehicles parked in those vacuums that would not be available to customers.
And then the hours of operations, the vacuums automatically turn off. So, I can't go there at midnight and get vacuum my car.
Great question. So, hours of operation are eight to eight. So, our employees are, whenever anything is operating on the site, employees are there. They're there one hour before opening to prep the site for the day. They're there one hour after opening to clean and close down the site. Those vacuums are shut off after the last customer leaves, after the tunnel is closed. And then the vacuums are only turned on in the morning when they're ready to open the tunnels. So, the vacuums are not available outside of normal business hours when they are, when there's also employees there as well.
Thank you.
So, the boards, what's before the board is to decide whether to send a solicitor to support or oppose. I will just say, based on some of the review letters, some of the previous meetings and conversations with consultants, did just pull out three or four things that if the board wanted to suggest some conditions to accompany any decision, they could. One would be to include the perimeter wall that they show around the perimeter site, just kind of to provide some screening since the drive aisles are pretty close to the roadway. Something we see for parking areas that are close to the road, just a suggestion and something that's mimicked, is mirrored in the committed review. Another that came up at the last meeting was to include some brick or stone of the facade, the building, the signage, and the perimeter wall, whatever combination that is. I don't get the sense of board has a specific vision in mind, but a condition such like, such as that could be included. Sidewalk, which they're also showing. And pedestrian connection. I'm not sure what the PennDOT process would look like for the HOP, but if the sidewalk is required by code, they may be triggering curb ramps, things like that. So, that may be something we want the zoning hearing board to be aware of. And then the last, based on some of the parking questions and circulation, maybe just something to the effect of like a circulation and operations plan to be reviewed during land development. Wouldn't have to have the details of that sorted out. It sounds like they've got some good ideas for how they can control things, but it'd just be something that the zoning hearing board could tee up during land development and they'd be kind of beholden to that conversation during land development. Just some, just some suggestions.
I like all of those and suggestions. They just make sense. Okay. All right.
So, would, maybe it's a question for Bernadette and for the applicants' council as well. These could be conveyed by the zoning officer. We could convey, we could memorialize them in sort of a memo. There's, I guess, different ways, assuming that the applicants' council has no major objection here. We could convey these to the zoning hearing board in various ways, but if the board is, if that's something that's important to the board, we can make sure that they understand.
We have no objection to any of that. And Bernadette, it's up to you. If you want to come to the zoning hearing board and spend time with me, I'd appreciate it. You can also put it in a letter if you want. It's however you want to handle it.
I'm thinking the board would direct a letter to be written to the zoning.
I second a motion to a letter. Oh, you, I can't do that. All right. So, I guess what we're going to do is we're going to try to memorialize Zach's comments forth, put to the zoning board.
And then.
Okay, so. So, I guess we really don't need to make any type of motion per se.
I think Zach suggested is to make a motion to send a memo or a letter to the zoning hearing board solicitor emphasizing those four, that we'd like to see those as conditions if the zoning hearing board were to make approval.
Okay.
If I'm correct, yes.
Once again, I'll second that motion.
I can't make a motion.
All right, so moved.
May I suggest a motion? A motion to, that the solicitor work with the zoning officer, or I'm sorry, with Zach Barner to draft a letter to the zoning hearing board solicitor emphasizing four things that Mr. Barner indicated that should the zoning hearing board grant the application, that these be imposed as conditions of approval.
I second that. I will make that motion as read by the solicitor. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Enjoy retirement.
The second application before the zoning hearing board next month or this month will be the application of John Langford and Stephanie Myers. Property is at 16 Buttonwood Avenue. It's currently a non-conforming, legal, non-conforming residence where they're going to build a second story onto the existing structure and they're expanding the legal, non-conforming structure. So, for under the expansion section of the code, they're required to get approval from the zoning hearing board.
I don't have any problems.
There's already been other ones in the neighborhood there. You know, that you have not opposed and the zoning hearing board has approved with some minor conditions.
I think they can handle it.
The township would like to remind residents, as winter is quickly has arrived upon us, that property maintenance is very important, especially this time of year. We're asking you inspect your mailboxes to ensure that they're in good condition and will make it through inclement weather and with the loads that are imposed by snow plowing operations that they'll be safe and standing through the winter time. They're also asking that we please trim any trees around your property, especially out in the right of way to provide an 11-foot of clearance to allow for snow plows to be unimpeded in their operations. You're also asked and reminded to pull portable athletic equipment back onto your property out of any right of ways. Lastly, we're asking you to be aware that there are no street parking of vehicles, trailers, campers, dumpsters during precipitation events until the roads are cleared and treated by our Public Works Department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thanks, John. Next, we move into public comments. Are there any public comments? Barbara, if you'd like to come up to the mic?
Want to make sure. Thank you. Hello. Good evening. Barbara Arnold, 31 Fonstock Road. I emailed you guys last week and I know, thank you, Pete, for responding. So, just wanted to, you know, sort of publicly reiterate that I had emailed you guys a Euclid Township ordinance that calls for an applicant for land development approval to demonstrate that a property is free of contamination, hazardous materials or waste, or has been remediated of those items. So, I just wanted to thank you in advance for your attention to that matter. I did just make, I know you probably have these, but I just printed out the one-page thing that I wanted to hand you, and I'm going to give one to Mr. Smith as well. I know something like this obviously isn't going to, you know, help the Bishop Tube situation at this point, but it could certainly prevent future situations, and I think we all definitely would like that. So, so I thank you in advance for taking a look at that information and hope to hear more about it at a future meeting.
Sure. I think both Peter and I got separate ones. I forward mine on to Zach to take a look at, and I think Peter did the same. So.
I thank you for that, Barb.
Yeah, thanks for sending it.
Yeah. It's some very straightforward wording and it seems like a very common sense type of ordinance. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Rich, would you, would you care to engage us in the consent agenda?
Okay. Let's see. Approved meeting minutes from October 2025. Ratified payment of bills $971,883.43. Treasury report. Approved payment application number five from Flyway Excavating for the Stream Bank Restoration Project, $7,200. Approved payment application number one and final from Heidelberg Materials Northeast for the 2025 paving project throughout the township. Approved Sidley Road and Mill Land Trail Connection Amendment Number Three, not to exceed $59,749. Approved proposal from Greenberg Tareg for environmental insurance for the Spring Ridge Balderson Track, not to exceed $25,000. Still on target by the end of the year? Wow, it's tremendous.
I do have one question. Did we get a clarification as far as the period of time that that coverage is for, for out there in Spring Ridge and Balderson?
Thank you. Yes, I did get clarification. This is actually just for the consulting services and liability assessment for the township. The policy will be purchased separately and with the board's review.
That'd be a typical policy year to year.
That's correct. Yep. Yeah, there may come a point in time where it's not needed anymore because there are some sunset provisions related to the remedial work and thereafter. So, that's quite possible.
Good. Approved purchase of EF Johnson VM 5930 Series Mobile Radio, 700 to 800 megahertz in the amount of $3,807.67. Ratify the payment to Malvern Electronic Security, the amount of $2,761.
What is that for, Greg? The Malvern Security?
We had the fire alarm system annually inspected and tested, and there are several components to the system that aren't up to code that we need to make modifications to and repair some existing components.
Thank you.
October consent. We approve payment for Flyway Excavating listed at $236,629. It should have been $136,629. We only paid the 100, right? Okay, all right. Okay?
I make a motion to approve the consent, unless there's any comments. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.